Okay, Madam Chair, you're live.
Welcome to the Monday, April 28, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting. This meeting is now called to order. Is when will you now conduct?
Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Supervisor Day.
Here.
Supervisor McDaniel.
Here.
Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
Chair Ayers.
Here. We'll now offer an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate, but if you'd like to join us, please say.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you have given to the people of Rockbridge County. Tonight, we ask for a special blessing for David McDaniel and his family as they recover from the passing of his father Ronald. We ask that you continue to look over our first responders and law enforcement officers, and continue to instill the wisdom and the strength to the supervisors to make the best decisions for the people of the county. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in this world, with every being justice for all.
We will hold citizens' comments near the beginning of the meeting. We will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. To join by telephone, you may dial in to one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window, or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No ma'am.
Okay, move on to recognition, uh, recognitions and presentations. Mr. Lewis?
Yes ma'am, we do have a resolution for it being May Business Appreciation Month. Would I read that into the record? Would that be?
That would be great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you ma'am. Whereas May is designated as Business Appreciation Month in the Commonwealth of Virginia, acknowledging the irreplaceable role of businesses in propelling economic growth. And whereas Rockbridge County is a vibrant, resilient, and forward-looking community enriched by the innovation, dedication, and entrepreneurial spirit of its local businesses. And whereas these businesses provide essential goods and services, create jobs, support local families, contribute to our tax base, and invest in the future of our communities through sponsorships, partnerships, volunteerism, and philanthropy. And whereas during challenging times and in moments of opportunity, our businesses demonstrate unwavering commitment, creativity, and adaptability, helping to maintain the fabric of life in our towns, countryside, and shared public spaces. And whereas the people behind these businesses, owners, employees, and entrepreneurs, are our neighbors, mentors, and friends who exemplify the community spirit that makes Rockbridge County truly naturally connected. And whereas Rockbridge County currently boasts approximately thirteen hundred business license holders and over thirty manufacturing operations, with a significant portion being small businesses operated by dedicated entrepreneurs. And whereas Rockbridge County recognizes the importance of fostering a business-friendly environment and supporting those who choose to build their dreams and livelihoods here. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors reaffirm our recognition of the month of May as Business Appreciation Month in Rockbridge County. Be it further resolved that the board expresses its deep and sincere gratitude to all local businesses for their vital contributions to our shared prosperity and quality of life. And be it finally resolved that the citizens of Rockbridge County are encouraged to join in recognizing and supporting the businesses that keep our communities thriving, resilient, and naturally connected. Adopted this twenty-eighth day of April, 2025.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We will now welcome citizen comments unrelated to the public hearings. When your name is called, please address the board at the podium stating your first and last name and magisterial district. Please let me your comments to no more than three minutes. There's a timer on the table for your convenience. Is there anyone signed up?
No ma'am.
Is there anyone online?
No one with their hand raised.
Is there anyone in the meeting room who wishes to address the board but did not sign up to speak? Yet, is this unrelated to the public meeting? Would you like to speak then? Okay, well, we'll hold that comment. Okay. Approval of the March 4th, 2025 Joint Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. Are there, is there a motion to adopt those minutes?
I prefer to take them separately if we could, as I would.
It is separately. It's just the March 4th currently.
So moved.
Uh, Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now we'll move on to the March 31st, 2025 meeting minutes. There in comments, or is there a motion to approve?
I'm ready.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Same.
And I vote yes. County financial report and appropriation resolution. Mr. Harrison.
Uh, yes, uh, there is no action items for the school division this period for the county. The total bills this period is five hundred seventy-five thousand, four hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. Additional appropriations include fifty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars for that, the commissioner of revenues, new software and support. There is three thousand and ten dollars for the Rockbridge Middle property. That was for the removal of light poles. That was, uh, causing potential danger to the public. Two hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars for the economic development. That's the I R F Stillwater Grant. That project looks really nice over there. Uh, fourteen hundred dollars for capital purchases fund, uh, for our, uh, the Tyler Municipal Software. And twenty-one thousand, five hundred and four dollars for the courthouse county administration, um, capital improvement plan. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Any questions? Comments, Mr. Harrison?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I, if I can, the one that you noticed there, uh, three thousand and ten dollars for Rockbridge Middle removal of light poles and electricity. Uh, I would like to publicly thank Dominion Power, Dominion Energy for helping us out with that project. Saved us great deal of money and got it done pretty quickly and got kids back on the field.
Yes, we do appreciate that. Thank you.
Not to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
And I vote yes. Consideration of administrative, uh, administration building custodial service contract. Mr. Harrison.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. Uh, invitation for bids, uh, for the custodial services for, uh, this building, uh, was advertised from March nineteenth to twenty-six. We received a total of seven bids. The lowest and responsible, um, bidder was Clean Care Services, our current contractor. And, uh, we are requesting, um, the board authorize, uh, approve the resolution and authorize, um, the county administrator to execute the contract if you find it satisfactory. And that contract has been reviewed and approved by the county attorney.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Consideration of Balloons Over Rockbridge Event Application. Mr. Suter.
Yes, uh, Balloons Over Rockbridge has submitted their annual outdoor events application for a two-day hot air balloon and music festival, offering piloted balloon rides, music, food, and craft vendors, uh, and children's activities for enjoyment of the community and to help raise funds and awareness for local charities and, uh, those organizations. The annual event has been quite popular over the years and very successful in the past. Uh, this year's event is scheduled for July the fourth and the fifth on the Oak Hill property at the Virginia Horse Center. Uh, given that a portion of the event will be held in the area leased by the county, the county, uh, the event also requires a license agreement, uh, with Balloons Over Rockbridge. Uh, while your board report notes that the license agreement wasn't prepared at the time of bid or, uh, at a posting, agenda posting Thursday evening, we actually got it on there as part of the package, so. Additionally, as, as required, the plan, uh, a plan for adequate parking facilities, crowd control, and traffic control, uh, in and around the event area has been reviewed and approved by the sheriff, and, uh, plan for adequate fire protection has been reviewed and approved by the county fire rescue chief. Finally, both the Virginia and the Virginia Horse Center Foundation are additionally insured for the duration of the event as noted in the application documents, supplemental documents. Uh, several members of the group are here tonight, uh, uh, including Beth Armstrong, Leroy Troxel, and I believe Leroy is the designated spokesman of the group, uh, if there are any questions. And my recommendation is to approve the application, authorize me to execute the required documents.
Questions or comments? We have fifteen minutes, so feel free to ask all the questions.
Well, just comments. I've been out there a couple of years now. It's very well run. I've never, uh, haven't noticed any problems. A huge group of community support out there, and I would, uh, move that we approve the application.
I'll second.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much. We are now at our public hearings, which needs to begin at six because we want to make sure everybody is here, uh, for them. Um, is there anything with the, any committee reports or anything from the supervisors? Would you like?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, I'd just like to make people aware that the concerned citizens of Glasgow have are erecting a new pavilion at the Thompson Community Center. It's a twenty-five by fifty-two pavilion, and, um, the building itself is undergoing a revitalization as well. Uh, I think the pavilion will be a great asset to the citizens of Glasgow. Just want to congratulate them and make everybody aware.
Thank you very much. All right, if there's nothing else, then we will take a short recess and reconvene at six.
Okay.
Right. And we are back. We will begin our public hearings with the ordinance designating certain personal property owned by Virginia Institute of Autism Incorporated as exempt from local personal property taxation. Mr. Dryden.
Yeah, the Virginia, I'm sorry, pull us closer. The Virginia Institute of Autism operates a school in the county where they serve approximately 10 students with autism or neurodevelopment disabilities. The school is a non-for-profit in Virginia and recognizes a 51(c)(3) organization by the federal government, by the IRS. They've approached the county with filed two applications for tax exemption. The first one is for personal property. And the second one is for real property. Under the, under the law, we're required to hold public hearings to consider both applications. The first public hearing is for consideration of their application to have the personal property, which is two Kia Sedona minivans to be exempt from county personal property taxation. The value of the minivans, the first one is valued at twenty eight thousand, twenty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars, and that's subject to an annual tax. Of last year would be five hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. The second one is two thousand, twenty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars, subject to a tax of four ninety-nine thirty-eight. Both these vans were bought, used last year in September. The, in the board report I provide you, I provide also a list of the items that the board supervisor is supposed to consider when they determine whether or not to grant a tax exemption application. For your reference, the tax exemption application is granted via ordinance, meaning this is a legislative act by the board of supervisors. It, while the, occasionally the board super has granted taxes and exemption requests by certain not-for-profits for real estate in the past in the county. The board is not bound by any past activities and you're not setting any precedence for future activities, whether you decide to grant the ordinance or to deny, deny the ordinance. It says purely based on the facts that are presented to you today for making your determination. The section fifty-eight point one thirty-six fifty-one of the Code of Virginia gives you a list of eight different items to consider when determining whether or not to grant a tax exemption application. The first one is whether or not it's 51(c)(3) and registered, the Virginia Institute of Autism has bred proof that they are registered and recognized as 51(c)(3) organization. Whether or not they have an annual alcohol license granted. And then the other items mainly are ones that are considered 51(c)(3), whether or not any of the directors, employees have excess compensation, which means compensation beyond a reasonable amount. That's also something that has, you have to comply with in order to be a 51(c)(3) organization. And whether any of the net earnings inert to the benefit of private individuals, that's also a 51(c)(3) consideration. So if they do have it properly, they should be okay with that. Whether the organization provides service that come good to the public, whether a substantial amount of activities are, deal with political activities, propaganda, et cetera, which is also a 51(c)(3) consideration. Whether the revenue impact locality and its taxpayers, the revenue impact of locality and its taxpayers by granting the exemption, whether that outweighs the benefits. And any other criteria facts which you deem to be relevant in your determination. Based off of those considerations, you should take those considerations in mind as you review the application, which is part of the package before you. And as you consider what questions asked the applicant during the hearing. And I'm open to any questions. Oh, just one thing to consider as part of the procedure at the close of the hearing, you would then either vote on the ordinance, whether to accept or deny it, or you can postpone the vote till a future meeting if you determine that's in the best interest. And based on our policy, the policy adopted by this board, if an ordinance is voted against, then any negative vote on the ordinance will consider it be an affirmative act denying that ordinance. So there'd be no need to vote separately. So if the ordinance is proposed and the ordinance, and the proposal to pass the ordinance fails, that will consider to be an affirmative act by the board denying the ordinance, and there will be no need to vote on a negative ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Dryden. I will now open the public hearing.
There is no one signed up?
Anyone online wishing to speak? If so, please raise your hand. Right, no hands raised?
Not, I, I believe you want to. I think that's preschool, sorry. We'll, we'll do that one soon. Is there anybody in the public that would like to talk about the tax exemption? If not, I will close the public hearing. Questions? Mr. Dryden?
Is, I, I didn't really ask, is the applicant here? Okay, we.
Is there anything you would like to say?
You, you need to.
Yep.
I'm the director for Vias Lexington Day School, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. We did submit this application for personal property and real estate as we've just purchased the building that we're in and are working to grow the program and expand it so that we can serve more clients in the area.
Thank you.
And if I may, my understanding of the facts are you currently serve 10 students, but you're anticipating serving between 24 and 30 students in the future. Is that correct?
Correct. We are now up to 11 students, but yes, we will be moving to serve 24 to 30 students in the future.
And just for the record, can you provide your name?
Megan Harding.
Thank you.
Emily?
Again, you, you have three options. You can, well, multiple options, but you vote to approve, to deny, or move to approve, to deny, or you can postpone, you can postpone for up to 30 days.
Do you have a motion? Or a question?
I make a motion to deny.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yeah.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We will move on to the ordinance designating certain real property owned by Virginia Institute of Autism Incorporated as exempt from local real property taxation. Mr. Dryden.
So the, the facts are similar, same organization, same 51(c)(3) qualification, not-for-profit organization. The difference here is that they're requesting for their, the school property, which they bought in January of this year. They purchased the property for one million dollars. The assessed value is eight hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars. The tax amount on that on an annual basis is five thousand two hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-two cents.
I will open the public hearing. Anyone? Signed up?
No ma'am.
Online?
No ma'am.
Any? Yes, ma'am? All right, this is on the tax exemption? It, that's fine. No, no problem. Sorry. I'll move closer.
You turn it up. It's all the way up. Yep, they're all maxed out.
Ms. Harding, is there anything else that you would like to add?
Um, yes, I'd like to just add that, you know, please consider this request as we are a nonprofit, and we would like to be able to focus our funds on our client services and our staff who, you know, do not get paid millions of dollars. And so we really want to be able to put all of our funds and resources into providing the quality services that we can and making sure that we keep costs, you know, nonexistent for families.
Thank you. Right, if there's no one else that would like to speak, I will close the public hearing. And gentlemen, is there any questions or comments? There's no other questions or comments. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to deny.
Mr. Lewis? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Day? Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yeah.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. We'll move on to the public hearing on the FY26 budget and the combined CIP. Mr. Suter?
Before Mr. Harrison presents his, his budget memo, I wanted to provide a few comments, if I may. At your last meeting on April fourteenth, the board authorized advertisement of the FY26 budget and CIP, and the budget proposed elimination of funding for the, the county's preschool off-the-bus program, which currently serves 26 children in three locations in the county, including Effingur, Fairfield, and Goshen. The program operates in each location three days a week during the school year from nine to one, nine AM to one PM. Since advertisement, we've received a, a total of 24 public comments. One of them was just received half an hour before this meeting and it's been forwarded to everyone. And that was on, online via email. Of these, the vast majority, 23 were in support of adding funding back into the budget for the preschool program. The other comment that we received, the 24th one, which was one of the earliest ones, was in oppo, oppo, I'm sorry, opposition to the proposed three cent increase to real estate tax. All of the comments were forwarded to the board and are on file in both my office and the, in the finance office. I will note that the majority of the comments were, were very polite and constructive in nature, which isn't, isn't always the case. In my opinion, they were polite and constructive. And in discussions with board members last week, Chair Ayers received consensus to add the funding for the program back into the budget for FY2026 and further engage the school division to, to have additional discussion on the potential to move the program under the schools in FY27 the following year. Mr. Harrison and I discussed two options for, for funding, for adding the funding back in while maintaining a balanced budget. The first would be to take funds from reserves for next year. The second would be to dedicate one hundred sixty-two thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars of the proposed tax increase to the program. Obviously, there's always a, a third that, that trying to make cuts elsewhere to make that up. I think the boards worked pretty hard and then cut it, cut it down pretty deeply to get to where we are now. So I don't, I don't know how we could do that, but that is always an option. And finally, other than direction on the fund source for this purpose, no action is requested or necessary tonight. State law requires one week between the budget public hearing and budget adoption. At that point, unless you have questions for me, I'll turn it over to Mr. Harrison for a final overview before the public hearing.
I want to, again, I want to like to thank the finance committee and Mr. Suter for all their hard work. We've had multiple meetings this budget. And a lot of, a lot of thought and work went into it. And I also want to thank the entire board individually for all your comments and suggestions as we went through this, this process. And I say, I I want to thank my staff for all the background support they provide and helping me with the crunching the numbers for you. The FY26 budget and the FY26 through 2030 capital improvement plan have been advertised. They're advertised twice in the News Gazette and also posted online. Just the highlights, the real property taxes are proposed to increase from three, three cents from sixty-one cents to sixty-four cents. Personal property taxes remain unchanged at four twenty-five. But the personal property tax relief rate will go from twenty-seven to thirty percent. And also other personal property taxes, including business personal property taxes, remain unchanged at four twenty-five. And machinery, machinery and tools tax remain unchanged at two fifty-five. The general fund budget is balanced at sixty-five million five hundred fourteen thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars. With the addition, adding the preschool program back into the budget, the, the total budget would be sixty-five million six hundred seventy-six thousand six hundred fifty dollars. The capital purchases fund is budgeted at eighty-seven, eight hundred seventy-three thousand nineteen dollars. The capital construction fund at two million two hundred fifteen thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars, and the ARPA fund at eight hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars. The school operating fund is budgeted at thirty-eight million six hundred sixty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars. The cafeteria fund at one million five hundred ninety-three thousand six, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The school debt service is budgeted at three million four hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred seventy-two dollars. And the capital fund is budgeted at five hundred sixty thousand, being the four buses. As Mr. Suter explained, there's some options provided to add the preschool program back in. Of course, we're not adopting it, but if I could have just direction by consensus and I had that prepared for whether, which option you'd like to choose, I can have that adjusted and put into the budget of, for next Monday. And at this time, have any questions you have of us?
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Gentlemen, are you having any more questions for Mr. Harrison and? Why open the public hearing? All right, that I will open the public hearing. Hey.
Is no one signed up yet?
No, no one signed up? I think there are a few, now, this is the time for you to speak on this issue. Take one at the time, if you don't mind. Would you please give your name?
Adwina Schaefer, or better, better known as Mr. Winnie, all the children. I appreciate you considering putting the money back in the budget for our program for next year, but I am concerned about yours to follow that. Our children that we have in our program are, don't come to school every single day. They have about three days, and the parents like that. The parents like that they're, you know, they're pretty young, and they're not ready for them to go all day long, every day. And they're also, our programs are in all areas of the county, so it's closer to where they live. We have always served the middle people, the ones who did not qualify for hit start. And the price on the other daycares is way too high. So we try to, we have, the whole time I've been in it, we have tried to serve those people who did not have an opportunity for a preschool program. When I started, it was more like a parks or recreation thing, then it got more important to have a preschool experience, and that's why I'm still in here. I'm here for the kids. Your, your, their actual pictures are the ones that we're serving this, this year. They are, they are people, and they're smart little people, and and we love them, and the county really needs to embrace them, and there's got to be a different way, a different plan. Something needs to happen for our county, because there's, there's hardly any daycare or preschools through the county, if you think about it. So I don't know if it's businesses getting together or the whole county getting, some kind of plan I feel like can happen for that. We try real hard to reach as many children as we can. And I appreciate you all supporting us this, this far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mercy Smith, and I'm the lead teacher for the preschool program with Effingur and Goshen. And I want to just to talk about my students. You know how parents like to brag about their kids? I like to brag about my students. Casey here, he came with us when he was two and a half, and I asked Mr. Winnie if I could take him, because I'm certified to work with little ones, infants and toddlers, and because we sow a need. And so he came with us. And so he came with us and at the time that he came with us, he was like really shy. He needed to learn a lot of social skills being around other children, but the main issue was his speech. So the second year, we, we saw a lot of improvement, but it's still, you know, working with Mr. Daryl from the school district. He is the speech therapist. He has worked with him. You know, he goes to our school. He provides the services in our school. So by the third year, we really saw an improvement. He, you could not understand him at all. And so by the third year, you, now you can have a conversation with him. And that's the difference that the program is doing. You know, it's like now we have trouble with him being quiet. So he's over there and we have to tell Casey, be quiet, Casey. But what a gift that is, that he can communicate his needs. And it's because the program where he is, and I have a, I have a text that his mom wanted me to read. By the way, their, his parents are working parents. Mom works overnight, dad works during the day. They only have one car. So I went to pick him up from home and I asked them, you know, if I was allowed to tell their story and they say, absolutely, you can talk about our family. So this is the, his email she sent me. She said, I'm so proud, proud of all the process he has made with you. You took him when he was only two and a half year old and I noticed a big improvement every year. Yeah, almost done. Wait a minute. He will never forget his amazing teachers and Mr. Daryl. He's, Casey is always eager to learn and to tell me what he has learned. He always, he passed all the screenings that he took because he's going to kindergarten. So that's the difference that we make. Now, we have another student coming to Effingur next year. And he has two hearing aids. So sometimes you see numbers and that's why we, we brought the picture. So you can see their faces. You can see those are little lives that matter to us. And this little one coming with us next year, Mr. Daryl, the speech therapist, he wanted him to go to preschool. And Grandma said no, because they're going to make fun of him because his speech. After being in Effingur and watching our program, she said, Effingur is the only preschool that I will send my kid because she has been in there, he has been in there. And so we're ready for that. So like Ms. Winnie was saying, we appreciate that you have changed your mind about the budget, but it has to be a better solution for the years to come. I also want to say thank you to different people like that, they have taken an interest in our school. The public library, you know, we have our schools and inside the Goshen library and so that's great. Boxer Wood that keeps coming, you know, their programs, there's people that is coming inside our program and they know because they come and visit. So if y'all want to know more about our program, you're welcome to come anytime and see what we do. And my last thing to say is like, we're not a daycare. We're, we're really an educational program. In the past three years, because I'm bilingual, I'm bilingual and I have another, my sister is bilingual too. We have introduced these kids to the, two different languages. They're learning Spanish and they're learning sign language too. And so that's something that I don't think other regular preschools are doing. So we're trying to do our best and I just want to y'all to know that. Thank you.
Is, is there anyone else that would like to speak this time? Is there anyone online?
Uh, if there's anyone online would, would like to speak at this time, you can raise your hand. Seeing none?
Okay. If there's no one else, then I will close the public hearing. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Dryden, we need some direction in how to handle preschool funding, either from the reserves or utilize a portion of the real estate tax increase, correct? Was that?
Uh, yes, ma'am, if you just forgot us.
That, that's what you both had asked, that we need to do one of those things if we agree to do it next year, correct? Anything from?
I would suggest you, you take it out of reserve and be done with it. And also just by everyone here, I, I don't think there's anyone up here that doesn't value preschool and appreciate the jobs that have been done with our young people. But I think we can do better than what we're currently offering. And I agree that we need to get together as a community, as a board with the school system to do better for our children. And if we're going to run a preschool, then we need to run it according to what the state regulates. And, 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 and we need to bring it up to that level. And no offense to Mr. Suter. Well, he's a great county administrator. He's not a school administrator and the program doesn't need to be under that this board's direction. It's an education. So whether it's public, private, a combination, I, I think we've got a year that we can work on and solve.
Anybody else?
I agree with Dr. Lyons.
I, I think what we have is amazing and it, it would be wonderful to have that under the school system. And perhaps be able to expand it, have more, more people or have more people take advantage of what you are creating or what you have created over the, over these years, but maybe doing that under the school system allows for.
Madam Chair, if I may, you know, I agree with Dr. Lyons. Great program. I really appreciate what's been done. I, I've heard, you know, a couple of times the school system, I, I just want to make it clear, we have to be very careful. We can't push this on the school. School system has their own program and they're doing what they are capable of doing. So we can't force them to necessarily take. And, but I do believe there are other options, whether private or, or public or whatnot. And I think as economic development, we should be embracing and looking for resources for that type of program in our community. So I think we can do some work on our end to, to try to bring more options to our citizens. And, you know, I agree with Dr. Lyons to take it out of reserves because it is a one-year funding. And given ample notice that there may be changes next year.
So the, you don't have to vote on that. We just need direction to, on what, as Mr. Harrison said, what to bring back in your board report, which would be published this Thursday for Monday night's consideration of budget adoption. And we'll have that information in that report and have the, the numbers squared away. If there, if you feel, I feel like there's consent.
Either way is fine with me. Our next scheduled meeting is one week from today on May 5th at 5:30 in this room and the only topic will be to consider approval of this 2026 budget.
Madam Chair, one more comment before we move on from budget. There had been some talk about nonprofits that we are not contractually obligated to fund. And while we are funding the requests this year, I think it should be put out there that, yeah, there could be potential in future years for that to be cut, just making them aware.
I, I might be the only person that disagrees with you on that. But I, I understand that we need to take a look at our budget completely and, and yes. But is there anybody else that would like to weigh in on this?
Madam Chair, we were just discussing here, did, did we close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Let's make it.
Yeah, it's a good thing. Thank you. I always use the help. All right. Are there any other board comments? Or unfinished business? If not, I will move. Chair, is there a motion?
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
And I vote yes.